...are probably aware, it's probably partly a painful job. There's a lot of background in the city with a lot of jargon, a lot of procedures, and it's all in the interest of building the best education for the children who are theoretically, one way or another, the future of our city and our state and our country, et cetera. Terry Mullins, the standing school board representative, just walked in, so I'd like to acknowledge him that he's here. Jason Haas is running for District 14 Congress Supervisor, CFC, at the back. Are there any other dignitaries who look for... Is that Greg Dickinson? Greg Dickinson, also running for District 14, has just stepped in here in the brown coat. Anyone else who requires acknowledgement?
I'm gonna leave in about five minutes, because we've got a school board meeting tonight.
Excellent. Okay. The procedure tonight will be that each of the candidates will be getting one minute to respond to their questions. Opening statements in a minute, they'll have closing statements at the end. If there's a topic that seems like it's generating a lot of discussion, I may just open it up to all three of them after each of them has had an opportunity to respond. We've got Greg, our timekeeper, here, who I'd like to just have you show what we're gonna be doing. He's gonna be keeping time once I've asked you the question, because timekeeping as the authority. We'll just kinda give you a little countdown, and once we're at red, I'd encourage you to wrap up your comments, and then we'll move on. Anyone else in the audience have questions that they'd like to bring up across this point? Do you want to do that? And we'll get going, and just second I get a chance to see what these are.
Sure.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Megan was just suggesting, and I agree, if we could have folks move off, so that late comers will have a place to filter in. We won't bite you up here, and we do have more chairs up front. Wilbur, for the phone series and mics if you can. Basically, for your opening statements, who are you and why are you running? Do you have a minute? For Megan, Candy Jo Lusnuski and Ed Heinzel. So, Megan.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you to Bayview Compass and to the District 8 parents. It's a pleasure to be here. You know, as I was on my way over, I was thinking about the last couple of weeks and how it's brought into hard focus some of the concerns that brought me into this race in the first place. So, you know, from the open enrollment bill that recently passed in the Senate, to the letters that came home to all of us from our principals describing the budgets that they're facing for this coming year, the news of the state budget that's gonna roll out at the end of this month. You know, we're more on crossroads, and I think we initially anticipated in terms of graduation rates and achievement, and we're all here because we believe that MPS can do better. I know that's why I'm here. And I think that I have the experience, the stake in this with my four little boys, the background in the public policy, and working directly with the schools, and I have the backing of the teachers, and I would be really amazingly proud to have a vote. Thank you.
Candy Jo.
Hi, thank you for inviting me here this evening. The main reason that I decided to run for school board was that I have two children in the system, and I'm currently not happy with the opportunities that are offered by the system. Once you get out of grade school, looking at our middle schools and high schools, I would like to build a stronger system so that when parents are looking at our schools, they are not running to the outside schools, Franklin-Selmarkey, any of the other neighborhood schools. We need to keep people in our study and bring the programs to our city so that our city becomes strong. Thank you.
Ed.
This is kind of a... I had a little longer thing prepared than I'd written it, but I've always been interested in public service, and I've been interested in the educational system of Milwaukee. My son is a successful graduate of the MPS system. I'm proud of the education he got here. He's currently in the Army, he's gonna be returning to Milwaukee as to her duty is over. I'd like to see if we can maintain the system and improve it, so that my grandchildren have at least the same opportunities, without better opportunities, that he's had in the past. I'd like to see if we can improve the cooperation and partnership that we have between the superintendent, who I think is a very exciting individual, is gonna do a lot of good things for us, and the board and the teachers. I think we need to focus our work on education. I'd like to see if we can improve our core skills and graduation rates, particularly in math, science, and language skills that we're gonna need for students to select their own future piece of work. And I'd also appreciate it if you'd be able to speak with your guys.
Great, and I very much appreciate your keeping any challenges, more questions. We've got a question here that's only the first one I was going to have you guys go with anyway, which is, what do you perceive is the role of the school board representative? And that dovetails in with what I was going to ask you, which is, what is the role, and what is your understanding of the power that school boards have, and what are the limits to their power? So, for the first one, we'll go in the same order, and after that, we'll rotate, so that the second question, each other speaks first, and we'll go around. So, Megan, what is the role of the school board?
Well, I've actually attended a fair number of school board meetings, and I think that I have a pretty keen understanding of the role. I'm in the central office at different community meetings, also working with people in the central office to start. I understand pretty well the limitations of what can be done on the Lead Street versus what's the role of Madison versus what comes down from Washington. It's our biggest problems, the perception that the board controls a lot more of our destiny than in some cases it actually does, and the two Madison, across the buildings and the administration office, across from the boardroom, changes that are coming up from Washington, and what we need to anticipate to keep the district strong in light of them.
So Candy, what do you understand to be the role of the school board director?
The school board director is the superintendent. They're the person that the parents would contact if they have a problem. Of course, they're the goal between the... any of the functions. I sit on the governance council at my children's school, and I understand that there's a spending that can be cut in terms of kids, and a parent that's looking at that, so I do.
Ed.
Obviously, the school board has a critical role when it comes to budget and guidance for the superintendent and the teachers. I think we need to have more partnership between the school board and the parents and the teachers and the superintendent, so we focus on educational goals. One of the things I'd like to see is more outreach from the board to the parents, to the teachers, so that there's more communication going on, so that we're more aware of what's going on day to day in our schools. I also think that Megan is correct, that we need to be more aware and more proactive with what we're doing with our legislators, particularly in Madison. That's gonna be critical. I don't think that in the last eight to 10 years that we've done an effective job. I'm talking about the positive aspects of our school system, and there are many. I don't think we've gotten that message out. I also don't think that we've effectively interacted with our legislators to help make sure that they're helping us rather than hindering us in the goals we've proved up in the MPS system.
Kind of following up on what, how you guys addressed that question, why don't I just ask you some of the hows to what you guys are talking about, and then also what the main issue of your campaign is? What's the one thing, what's the biggest flag in your platform? And we'll start with Candy.
I'm sorry, can you...
What is the main issue of your campaign?
My main issue is that I feel that the school board needs to be able between person, that parents need to have somebody to go with, that they can give their questions to, their concerns to, and know that somebody's gonna get back to them with answers or direction. I don't feel that right now the school board is doing a very good job of that. We need to be open to coming into the schools, meeting with teachers, letting them know what's going on down on the Lead Street, letting them... the bills that are being passed, the new legislation, keep everybody in the loop. We need to... I think that MPS is not broken by far, and that the system can definitely be brought back to where we have kids staying and we have outside kids coming into our system. Thank you.
There's a couple of issues that people talk about. One of the ones I've bumped into a number of times to programs and the schools, they're concerned about the loss of programs, particularly things that we've often talked about as luxuries, art, gym, music, we wanna be able to keep those. Property taxes have come up a little bit, but they're more concerned about future increases in property taxes as a result of the loss of revenue sharing from Madison, goes to the way it is right now. Graduates, we talk about a lot. I look at parental involvement as an important thing that a board member can help improve. One of the ways is making sure that the parents not only are involved with their children, but try to keep them involved with their actual schools. Too often we see in a board meeting where they're talking about closing or moving the school or changing the school, and the parents all of a sudden show up and are concerned. I think they need to be concerned from day one, and get the word out about the successes in their schools, so we don't come to the point where we have to make those decisions.
I spend a lot of time going door to door and talking with people, and I find that generally folks are in two camps, that they believe in MPS quite strongly, and they're discouraged by the true obstacles that we face and the disinformation that seems to be out there about the great things that are going on in the district. And then there are folks who have bought that, who really do believe that there's absolutely nothing going on in MPS that is worth maintaining, that's worth supporting. And I wanna take care of the first group. I wanna say, "That, sound like you, like, my kid is getting a fantastic education," and that's the case for a lot of people, and we need to be careful of these budget cuts and do what we can. And I wanna talk to the people in the second group and make them feel proud to pay their property taxes again. And so I try to be inspiring to people that there is a way through this time of financial crisis, and that we have to be mindful during that time of keeping the economy achieving gap and keeping kids graduating.
I wanna ask you guys each a couple of follows, just in response to what you did there. Candy, you seemed to be mentioning communication is something that's essential to you. What's an example of a way that you would communicate differently than the current board director?
Well, I feel that when a parent comes to you with a concern, a question, if I don't know that question, I need to find out the answer to that question. I need to be somebody that they feel like they can contact when they have nowhere else to go, and know that I'm gonna get back to them and that I will not leave them hanging out there on my land.
Okay. And then Ed, you mentioned parental involvement is a major sort of theme. I'm curious, has you had an example of something that you would do that could increase that, open the door to parental involvement? I think that's gonna be a theme that we're gonna come back to later.
Why don't we come back to it? One of the things that I've heard is Daryl Finch of the Housing Authority has had some very good success with improving graduate witch rates by getting parents involved, the children and students from the Housing Authority. I've been trying, we've been playing the phone tag for about a month now, so I'd like to talk to you a little bit about that. But it seems to me that, and I didn't come up with this on my own, it's come from talking with teachers as well, that there should be a program, whether it's a social service program, or a parental organization, or some other volunteer organization, of mentoring the parents of the students, because frequently the parents were the same kind of students that their current students are, and they don't understand what it takes to make a successful student or a successful educational experience. So, those parents, to get them to understand the importance of attending school, so they're doing their homework at any time. And one of the things is that the parent is not a graduate. Work with them to get their DVD so they can do their homework with their students, as an example setting as well as an encouragement.
Now, just up to Megan here, you mentioned that there's some disinformation that sort of causes problems. I wonder if you could name an example of that, and again, how you would try to counter that, whatever the example of disinformation is.
Sure. I actually think a really good example is the first article that appeared in the Journal Sanmo about this race, and the title of the article was very, very dismissive of the school board, school board elections, and then had a paragraph at the end that said some nice things about the three of us. And, you know, my reaction to that was, to get a little upset, was to say, you know, I actually wanted to call it by counterparts and say, you know, let's write a letter to the editor and say, you know, we're running this robust campaign down in this district, and let's, you know, let's try... It takes both ends. You need the folks in the central office and the individual schools putting out the good news that's coming from MPS, putting things in context, and you need board directors that are also being really, really active with the reporters that they engage every day, and with other forms of media to talk about the good things that are going on.
Okay. We'll start with Ed this time. The next question that I've got for you guys is, can you discuss your perspective on Superintendent Thornton, what he's brought to the district? The sort of, if I'm understanding his theme correctly, it's sort of a trend towards curriculum centralization. What your perspective is on that, if that's a good thing or not? We can open it up if necessary.
I'm looking forward to working with Dr. Thornton. The man hit the ground running. He's obviously concerned about the success rate in MPS. He has a lot of ideas. I won't say I agree with him 100%, but I certainly think that he is working in the right direction. His initiative with the English curriculum, I think, was a very strong way to come in. I don't disagree with him about transgender students needing to feel comfortable when you go to a new school, that they're gonna walk into the same curriculum. It's gotta make it a lot easier transitional situation for them. I'm thinking that with the GE grant, if we get a similar program with the math and science where we're citywide and we have a strong curriculum there, it will also help our students a great deal. Some of his other initiatives, I'm very excited to talk with him about. As a board member, I look forward to partnering with him and the teachers to make his goals successful.
Megan.
Well, I like his rhetoric. I like what he's had to say so far. I like that he seems to have been able to share that message a little bit, and we've seen some really, you know, good articles in the press lately about the schools. And, you know, I was involved with the English curriculum, the reading curriculum as it was promulgated last year. It was actually, I'm saying that Neidricopoulos put forward, and we have to be mindful, but some of our best schools in MPS, the Montessori schools, the art schools, that they need to be able to also opt out of those programs as much as they do work for some, or else we really threaten those programs and their individuality and their attractiveness to parents that are truly seeking those methodologies. But I'm very enthused by the idea that he puts forward of the standard of care. I think that looking at the whole student and that we focus on their health needs, that we focus on what sort of extra responsibilities they take on at home, is something that I've been talking about as well. I'm really glad that he shared that from you.
Candy Jo.
Hi. I have great respect for him. However, I have a little bit of a different outtake. I have spent a lot of the school year going back and forth with him in regards to getting the STEM program established in our school. I thought it would be very easy considering that we had a teacher who was training the program, we have a curriculum, we have a school that definitely wants the program, the teachers are all on board, we found a community backer, and he seems to be struggling with the goal. And I am very disappointed to a point, but at another, it makes me wanna work a little bit harder to see what is making him tick and how he perceives how these programs are gonna be established in our system.
Why don't we stand Thornton for the next round? All were kind of touching on that. One thing that you agree with him on? One thing that you disagree with him on? And we start with Megan.
Well, I got to mention briefly that the idea of the standard of care, which is something that he's been talking about, and although it's, you know, sort of a medicalized model, that one of the areas that MPS, I think, really could do better is in reaching outside of its bounds to community partners to do things like expand the number of children that are applying for better care. I've worked, when I was working at Hunter Task Force, we had to fight really, really hard to get the schools to be willing to provide breakfast in the classroom, and it was, despite the fact that the school was really interested in the program, it was the administration that was pushing back of the program. So, I like the idea that he might be more open to these expansions and be a little bit more mindful of the whole child, which is something that's really important. And I think like everybody else, you know, that there's a lot of concern that he's here for the very short term to make some difficult calls, and then that he'll move on, and that he'll benefit from the superintendent can be here for him.
Okay. I feel that, I know that the idea of more originality with Neidricopoulos, but I am very glad that he's continuing to get the curriculum to all be the same across the board. I think he's starting to look at MPS more of a system and not as little individual schools and little individual districts, and I think as soon as the city as a whole starts to see that we are one system, and he tries to be more, tries to distribute things more equally throughout the system, that that's gonna bring our system stronger. And the thing that I don't exactly agree with him with is how he is being a little stand-backish from the principals. He doesn't wanna come right out and tell them exactly what he wants to do.
Like Candy Jo, I agree that reading across the system was a very good idea, but Megan's point about certain individualized schools needing to be able to stay individualized is worthwhile too. So, basically, I agree with his point of view with initializing the reading, the English course. One of the things I found most objectionable was his decision to try privatize the food service workers in MPS. I'm 100% against privatizing public employees. There's lots of reasons, I don't think I'm gonna have time to go into all of them, but as a school system, we need to set a good example of civic citizens as well as educators. Education happens outside the classroom. We don't treat our employees with respect, particularly employees that we've negotiated contracts with, with respect for our students and our citizens. And we also have a responsibility to pay a living wage and take care of people that we've negotiated contracts with.
Let me, you mentioned the literacy plan, if I understood correctly. Why don't we go to that? This is starting with Candy Jo. What's your perspective on the reading program, the literacy plan? Is it better, since you're standardizing things across the system? Are you losing anything by doing that? So, if you could just talk about it, just a second.
Well, I think that we don't lose anything by standardizing the program, that we are making it easier for people who do move within our city to go from school to school and be able to pick up where they have left off. I really, I have sat in the classes at school, the teachers seem to really enjoy the program. It is more time-consuming to them. They have to spend so many times, so much time and move with the kid, and they divide into smaller groups and work individually with the smaller groups. They have the opportunity to work with a child who might be a lower end, but then also to challenge the children at the higher end of that spectrum, which brings that all into play in keeping that the teachers are more individualizing the children's programs, and they're able to do that under that whole system.
I haven't had the hands-on experience that Candy has. Congratulations for having the time and making the effort to do that. I do think it will help transition for transgender students to go from one place to the other. It will also make it more of an apples-to-apples, we're looking at achievement across one school system to another, or across the one school to another. That's always been a tricky thing, assessing a student achievement when they aren't being taught the same or learning the same things can always be difficult. Standardized testing doesn't always prove what a student's actually learned. I hope, if we are getting some individual attention for the students, that should be a big factor. I would hope that it's that intense that we can get some more volunteers in the schools that the teachers can handle that kind of stuff.
I think that I come from the perspective similar to Ed and to Candy, that whatever might be lost, particularly this year in the first year of implementation, to creativity, that we gain back from these students. And truly, when you think about the kids that are changing schools four or five times a year, if they have the sense of accomplishment of being able to indicate to a teacher quickly which book they were reading, where they are with the curriculum, the teacher is able to differentiate to them quicker, that is, for a needy child, I imagine that that is a really a good experience, and I support that. I do think that a lot of things that teachers have a surplus frustration about comes with beginning the first year. It's a lot easier to innovate in the curriculum after you've been through it one time. I know we're all in our first campaigns, and I can imagine what we all think, and how we would do something next time. So, I'd like to, you know, by everything we can stand to give it a couple of years and see how it's going.
I wanna segue into our questions. This is the Bayview High School, I asked why, and we'll see if it warrants some discussion. But the discussion, my attention also to the question of Mel, she hasn't planned a competitive year. On the other hand, what does, they graduated from Bayview, how parents in the district received Bayview High School? And Bayview, and you guys will be reviewing, one of you, that's what it is. Look on something, the compadre for Bayview this past year, 2009, 2010, it's 1.9, down to 16.7 previous year, with different testing room, sort of on the jump, but nonetheless, if you look at the coordinate, the UW-Milwaukee is looking for in a, we're looking for 17 of 21, depending on where you are in your class. And so, whether they've got it in the preschool or whatever, looking, or do I send my high school, they see that, they're looking for specific ways to quantify how good this is. They get very discouraged because they feel like, oh, this is not turning out the kind of educational experience that I would like. The question that was sent to me here was that, and Bosick was noting that the other Southside Milwaukee students are using it for others, they're not quite able to. I get the sense of, this question, a couple, is Bayview a viable competition? Open is up to be two minutes per speaker, as I've been napping here. So, we start with Adam.
Okay. I'll say, I'll listen to the first one. Bayview High School would, has to be a major focus for a member from the 8th district and the board in general. It at one time was one of the crown jewel high schools in the MPS system, and there's no reason why it can't be again today. I know the teachers there are hardworking, concerning professionals that want to make sure that their students have a good education. I think we need to help them where we can, so if we can focus some of our resources, and I'm not just talking about money, I'm just talking about some other more qualified people who can mentor those teachers. If we can help them with situations, I know there's, I know there's some other questions about the way some of that functions, that we should put whatever resources we can and help that school. There's no reason that within a few years of concerted effort that we can't have Bayview be again one of the crown jewels in our MPS system. And as a board member, Rick's a Bayview, I think all the schools in this district need to have a board member present frequently, needs to, he or she needs to be a face that the teachers know, he or she needs to be a face that the students know, some of them, but definitely the parents know. If the board member is involved that way, the parents will be involved that way, the teachers will get excited, all that'll trickle down, and the students will have a better educational experience, and we can improve that school.
Okay. Thanks, Ed. Megan.
This is one of those tough questions. I'm glad you gave us a little more time, but I, there are a number of programs at Bayview High School that really stand out, you know, and that draw kids from all over the city, whether it's the sciences or the robotics, or the fact that they're one of the few high schools that still has an orchestra. There are a number of things to be proud of in Bayview High School. And, you know, I think that the, you know, like the CLP, the transition with Fertia is very new, and I think those administrations are still sort of figuring out how to work together, and I think that there, I actually agree with them quite a bit, that there is, there's a lot of good in that building, but like any large high school, there's also, there are problems. And one of the things that I would be very interested in doing is talking with the students, because a lot of times students have a very, very keen sense of what's going on in their building, what's working for them and what isn't, and when we increase student satisfaction, we meet them more likely to graduate, and they're more likely to graduate, you know, they're more likely to... they're more likely to graduate, you know, they're more likely to attend school in the first place, we may see those ACT scores go up. So that's where, that's where I tend to start, is with the students, with the kids. But, you know, it's, it's, my, my oldest student is a K5, he's, he's just about to turn six years old, but it's my aspiration to send him to Bayview High School. And I know that many, many people in our community feel the same way and are really committed to working with the really, the fantastic teachers that have been, the principal that's there now, to say, you know, how do we, how do we take what's good here and grow it?
Candy Jo.
I think that, that point, how do we take what's good and grow it, is what MPS needs to figure out. We have great high schools in our system and we need to find out what working at those high schools and use that as a plan and spread that through all the high schools. When you look at the other alternatives in our district here with Ronald Reagan, there are problems at Ronald Reagan also. They have disciplinary problems, but you, you need to realize that Ronald Reagan is a much smaller school. So when you comparing apples to apples, let's compare apples to apples. You can't compare a school that has almost 200 students less to a school. You know, Ronald Reagan has just over 200. I believe Bayview has right around 400 students, as far as, as I am aware of. So we need to keep that an aspect. There seems to be a total war going on right now at Bayview with Fritchie joining them and the Fritchie staff versus the Bayview staff. And I know that there was a timeline established that they have one year to figure out how to work together. And it seems like the Bayview staff really wants to make this work and the Fritchie staff is kind of, you know, standing their ground and not really wanting to mesh together. I think the two staffs need to establish a common ground and start there and start to work with each other, be it, you know, saying governance councils, saying something. And when parents are looking to get into these schools, they can't just get online and look at stats. We need to visit our schools. We need to go into the buildings, sit in in the class and see what happens at the school.
Okay, thanks Candy Jo. I just want to ask a quick follow-up to this, because it's slightly, this is slightly two issues. How important do you feel, each of you, that students in the district attend Bayview High School? How important is that? Because it's almost, it's a separate issue in some sense, as far as how the quality of the education at Bayview High School. But how important is it to you as a board member that there be a sort of a hyper local draw? Give me a quick response or up to a minute.
I'll go ahead. I think the fact that, that Bayview has a number of unique points is really important. I think because of that, it should continue to draw from the entire city. The life of our city is the entire city. Obviously, it is convenient for students to go to the school that's nearby, but the students from Bayview also go to other important schools. I mean, High School of the Arts, King, there's all kinds of places that they should have not been able to go. I think it's, it comes down to motivate the student, being interactive with the student from the teacher's point, from the school's point, from the parent's point, that's the making difference where they will go.
Okay. Megan.
I think that, I mean, if the question overall is...
How, how important is it for the kids who are in eighth grade and eight to attend the district Bayview High School, particularly Bayview?
And, and that goes into the bigger question of whether we should have more schools. I, I think that the difference of MPS is the wealth of options for students and that sort of, no matter your learning style, no matter your interest, that there is, that there is a place for more students here. And, and that includes some of the P2 schools and the charter schools and different programs that need kids that have really significant learning needs or social needs. And so although I, I say that I would, I would hope for my kids to attend Bayview, it's because I can see it from my house and I would like the convenience of that. But similarly, if it turns out that they're gifted in language, DNA, so I'm going to say, I want you to go to MFL, I want you to go to school of yours. So I think my, my statement was more, I want my students, I want all students to go, okay, you're the best, we do what we can.
I think it is important for the children in our neighborhood to be, at least have that option of going to Bayview. Right now, I think Bayview is getting a bad rap. The, the parents who are looking at the choice of an eighth grade or, you know, going into high school, Bayview doesn't seem to be one of their first choices. And that's why I think, because Bayview has great programs, there are great programs in the school, the STEM programs there, I mean, they have some wonderful programs to, to offer the students and that's why I think it's, it's very important for parents to visit the schools that you're interested in and, and take your children and, and see their reaction, you know, meet with the staff, see what's going on. We have a lights on program for that reason, so that we can walk into any school. Also, I think we need to figure out a way to sell our schools. You know, Bayview has some great programs, but a lot of parents aren't aware of the programs that are there and the advanced learning programs that are there and, you know, the, the top rate learning that Bayview does have to offer.
Okay, let me cut you off there. A quick follow-up to all you again on the Bayview High School question, just because this has been floated out there. Do you, would you be open to splitting up the high school into several smaller high schools? Do you feel that the program adds, that it deserves a few years to see whether Bayview and Fritchie can successfully merge into something that is more competitive? Or do you feel that the plug could be pulled with some success? And we'll start that one with, with Megan real quickly. This is a follow-up to Bayview.
Yeah. You know, I honestly hadn't, hadn't considered that, but my initial reaction to that is no. I mean, there are very successful public high schools all over this country that have 1,600, 2,000 students. So we should be able to make, you know, Bayview work at the size that it is without creating an arbitrary structure that somehow delineates it into different schools. And we've seen that not particularly work for, for example, Division 7.
Would you split up Bayview High School into a different kind of program?
I, I wouldn't. I think that they need some time to see if they can mesh with Fritchie and see how that, you know, maybe it's a three-year type of thing, just to see if they can get that program to work. The options are out there, if you're not looking for, you know, the, the earlier grades to be at your high school, you have other options in the system. But I don't think I would split it up into anything smaller.
Congratulations, Ben.
Yeah, I, I don't think the size is dependent on whether it's success or not. I think it's, it's who's running it and how they're managing it and, and governance there. So I'm not in favor of splitting it up at this time. I'll just say that I graduated from a school that was combined middle school and high school. It was a public school system. It worked. The high school was prior at that point was about 450 students and the middle school was 200 students. So it can work and it's properly done. It, it takes some effort though, it's not something that simply happens overnight just because we want to.
Just to real quickly tie it to Bayview, I wanted to question Bayview High School, maybe about 30 seconds each of you. Do you have a suggestion for Bayview High School? What ways that they could improve what's there? And I'm going to ask about communication in the next question, so we might not, Megan will have to talk about that. Candy Jo, sorry. What, I'm hearing you each identify strengths about what exists there and I'm wondering if, you know, if that's enough and if you've got ideas on how to make this work.
I think the teachers need to be totally, totally committed to the program. If you get the teachers to commit to what's going on in that building, the students follow their teachers, especially if the teachers are strong.
I don't have a clue with the teachers. I think the teacher, where the rubber meets the road. I haven't met a teacher yet that I did introspect. Here's my son went to MPS, I thought all the teachers were committed, I didn't understand the issue with that. Just think they need some more help, I think they need some more direction. I think we have, we have a presence there, the board members, the parents work together. I think that that school can, can be something.
I, I think that they could stand to talk to, talk to Dr. Paul Williams, who's the Norfolk Secondary School, which is called the Dongmere Middle School Building on the Norfolk side, it's about seven seconds or so. They, although that school, I would say, you know, has its own issues with attendance and behavior and core performance in a lot of areas, they, they are integrated in one. There's a sense of it being one school and, and I think that's...
Next question is, ask, do we sort of communicate if we're getting mentioned at least once on your own, that people can talk about it in the future divisions? But it is an issue because then you get into this public perception problem of all of schools are horrible. So basically, do you have ideas about how to get the good word out and if so, what are they? And we start with Adam.
Okay. Obviously, the teachers do have to do what they can do. There are, there are some teachers who blog and talk about education as well as other subjects of their interest. That's something to be done. When I talked about parental involvement earlier, parental involvement in their PTA or PTO, governance councils, those parents also be the ones getting the word out. I mean, they should be talking to their board member, they should be talking to their media, their local media, they should be bugging the, the compass if they see something good happening in one of our schools here. It's, it's a group effort at this point. In order to be successful, we're going to have to have parental involvement at that level as well. That's why I talked about touting your, your, the special programs at your school, making your voice heard in the community, with the board, with the teachers. It'll, it'll be a critical thing going forward.
One school I, I like to use as an example when I talk about this issue is Trowbridge, which is in this district, it's over by Ananide Coffee, give you all a, a place landmark. It's a gorgeous old Victorian-style creamed bread building that was built, I think, in the 1890s. It's one of the older school, school buildings in the district. And it's one of the smaller, they got a new principal three or four years ago now, he came over from Roosevelt Middle School and has really turned the school around. They've increased their attendance every single year. They have a tremendous number of community partnerships and they're pioneering, getting their kids involved in the freshwater sciences. In fact, I believe it says School of Freshwater Technology or something wonderful with that on it. And they're proud that they're the closest school geographically to the lake. So, and, you know, although I think they're the best kept secret in this neighborhood, I've actually convinced friends from Calhoun to send their kids there, that I, I also believe that, you know, if you ask people in the freshwater science community what they think about schools, they're going to say, well, we're working with Trowbridge and it's fantastic. So I, I think community partners are the way to go.
I think that that is a topic that MPS struggles with, is getting, getting to the press the good things that do happen at MPS. And I guess as a parent of two students at one of the, my children's school Garland Elementary, one of the best elementary schools here in the eighth district, and we struggle all the time with how to get our name out. And the parents doing it, the, the staff doing it, just does not seem to be enough. I think we are going to really have to work at getting things into the news, getting events that are going on at school too, like the compass or calling the, the journals that know when things are going on at our school, major things, so that, that the community is aware of some of the good things that happen at our school.
Okay. This one goes first to Megan, and this is a question in the audience. Will you, like other school board members, MPS politicians and the majority of the press, fear talking about the responsibility of parents? So this maybe can segue into the parental involvement segment, but that's a question that deserves an answer.
It does. You know, that's, and it's something that you wind up talking about a lot with different constituents, meeting with them in different settings. I, I think that, that the, the, the tough nut of that question is really, you know, what, what role can, can a school board or a school play? You can't legislate, you know, that the parents are going to be involved. You can't, you know, at a public school, say you have to commit this many hours, you have to participate in this many fundraising drives. You can suggest it, you can suggest it strongly, but there's no way to, you know, coerce, I would say it's a strong word, but people into doing things. But I think that there, there are two obligations that come with that, which is maybe to think a little bit differently. You know, if we can't get parents to meetings that are after work, can we get them in for breakfast? If we can't get them in during the week, can we get them in on the weekends? Can we vary the type of things that we're working on so parents have a reason to come into the building beyond your kids in trouble? And then in addition to that, I think that we, we can't hold it against the kids. If their parents are in a situation where they can't come, they're working multiple jobs, they have childcare responsibilities at home, anything else, we can't, we can't hold that against our children.
Okay, thanks.
I think it is very important for our parents to get into the school and I know at the school where my children do a ton, we who offer different programs at different times specifically for that reason. We have Donuts for dads, that is all about the new computer systems, the new computer things that are going on in our school. And we do it at, you know, eight o'clock in the morning, so dads can get there at 7:45. So they are able to attend. We have Muffins for moms, which is usually around 10 o'clock in the morning, so that moms that are home can come in and see the new programs. That's how we introduce the reading programs, told them about the math testing that is going on. We also have after-school programs. We have a science night, a math night, a literacy night, all those type of things at different hours to pull parents in, to help them understand that the school isn't just about the students, it's about the whole, the whole entire family.
Okay.
There's a couple of issues involved. Obviously, both of you touched on those things about time and place, being flexible, to provide opportunities for parents to be involved with or with the school. But other than that, I've talked to some other people about outreach. Obviously, parents can't always get to schools. Bayview is a prime example, it's a Megan school, if you're traveling down here from other parts of the city, because we're pretty much south, it's difficult. And as a possibility, should provide some kind of outreach, we can meet with the parents on their own turf, so they don't have to spend the extra time to travel to the site, time from a job or other activities they have.
Then the question becomes, do you do...
I guess we, when we're at the, for my children, the time at Garland Elementary, when we have our programs, our muffins for moms, our installments for dads, that's where we are introducing all the new programs that are coming into the schools. We'll explain how the map test works, we'll explain how the, you know, the smart board that, you know, came into the building, how that might work. I mean, we, we take that opportunity at that point to introduce those things. And that's all things though that are coming down from like the governance and the PTO and, and those parents saying, hey, I'm hearing from other parents that they're not sure how this map testing works, what, you know, what can we do to get that information to them? And then that's where those programs are, you know, started structured out of those kinds of talks.
I touched on this a little bit earlier. One of the things I've seen with Easter Seals or Goodwill or some other group, or just parent volunteers from the school that can meet with parents, this is how your child can be successful, with these things. They need to be schooled, they need to be tested, they need to be done on time. If there are accommodations that need to make the teacher or the faculty aware of, let's get that out in the open in a less threatening situation in the school. I think some parents don't know what it means to be done to make their, or help their, their student be successful. And that's the prime goal, so whether it takes mentoring of not just the student, but the parent, I think that's something that we should look into and try to accomplish.
Yeah, I think when you're, when you're talking about folks that, that come from a situation where they might be the second or third generation and their family to be on track not to graduate from high school, it is really hard to, to explain either to the student or to the parent, what the value in completing that education is, when it's just not something that's, you know, part of your general socialization. But, you know, there, I, I think that Ed is spot on in terms of the roles that outside organizations can play. And I was involved last year with bringing an American organization... And I was involved last year with bringing an AmeriQ organization to Milwaukee that part of what we did was providing role models to kids in the classroom. And they would help with tutoring and other responsibilities, but a big portion of it was just getting them excited to walk in the door every single day. And then that's a piece that's really missing for a lot of kids. Is that school is, you know, it's an obstacle, it's something that, you know, you sort of are looking forward to a point where you can opt out. And when you transform that mindset, it actually can be contagious and can get parents coming into the building for something other than a disciplinary hearing for the first time. And it's really worth them to see.
Can I ask you just to clarify this chairman mentor program that you suggested? Would that be a partnership with other?
I would expect, hopefully, a partnership with a social service organization or volunteer organization. And obviously, we wouldn't be funds with that, but it'd be something that would be really important to do. If we're going to break the cycle, we have to do it here now.
Okay. Let me kind of change tack here. What should be done with the vacant frizzy building? And again, you'll start with Ed on this one.
Okay. I'm all for disposing of unused or underutilized buildings because we're wasting a lot of money maintaining and mothballing them. There are a number of programs in District Eight that are crying out for expansion. If we are able to move a school that's successful, has outstanding programs, and has large waiting lists, if we can utilize that building for that program, I'm all in favor of doing that. It's a fairly new building. It's in very good condition compared to some of the other structures we have in our district, which, as I mentioned, are from the nineteenth century or the early twentieth century. Some of them are maintenance nightmares. I'd like to see that building utilized effectively.
Okay.
I agree in that there are definitely a number of, to say, the increase in enrollment as well in order to keep their own programs strong, because obviously, for any reason you're going to enroll, that increases the funding and the number of teachers and specials and making the revenue up, which is a real plus. In terms of mothballing or selling schools in general, I come down more on the side of potentially leasing spaces at this point because I think there's a chance that we might see some growth in our real estate market at some point where we could maybe figure more off things we can right now.
I guess I'm thinking that maybe we should stop renting space, first of all, in MPS. We rent buildings for some of our schools, which makes no sense when we have empty school buildings. So I guess I would look more into that aspect of we need to stop renting space and use the space that we have. Whether it be for schools, teacher training. Some of the teachers go to hotels for training sessions. There's absolutely no reason why we would rent a meeting room at a hotel when we have the space available in our schools.
Okay. We got another one from the audience. And this will start with Megan. Please explain your understanding of the complexities associated with measuring the performance of teachers.
Wow. Do that one more time, one more time.
Please explain your understanding of the complexities associated with measuring the performance of teachers.
Wow, okay. There are many, and my understanding of them is hopefully sufficient, inside. That's a really good question. There, you know, it's such a, it's a huge issue right now. I mean, we are, you know, saying even today that they're ready to talk a little bit more about AmeriQ and different ideas that are sort of pretty popular in Washington and other school districts right now. So the, it's incredibly complex in terms of how, when a teacher finished their education and how much continuing education or professional development and which continuing education and professional development programs they've been able to take advantage of. If they've been in the same building for a while, if their principal has a chance to observe them, if their kids are in the grade level where they're taking WCCD, and so if they have any sort of test results that they can match off of year to year, whether it's going to seem more obvious now due to math testing. It's full of acronyms and it's very, very complicated. And I think that a lot of us, you know, I think we probably agree that it needs to start with getting the principals into the classrooms more to observe their teachers. How do we find that time in their day when we're eliminating their curriculum generalists and math teacher leaders and their implementers? I'm not sure. But, you know.
Thank you.
I talked as fast as I could.
I sense that.
There are a lot of difficult issues in measuring what our teachers know. But I think at the same time, by doing something like that, we can bring more programs to our successful schools. And I think it might be a road that we need to think about going down and really look into that type of program.
Performance of teachers has been a big topic of discussion in all kinds of media. And often the hot topic is student performance. Which is obviously a metric, but can't be the key metric. No matter how good the teacher is, if they're starting with a student who's four or five grade levels behind, they're not going to get up to current grade level in one year. That's, it's a catch twenty-two, which is not going to happen. I think if we're going to rate performance of teachers, we need to make sure that we have a system beyond the principal of people who are qualified to evaluate those teachers and have a benchmark that they use across the board. Actual observation in the classroom is key, not just looking at test scores or graduation results or any other metrics. I think it's key to see what the teacher's doing. There also has to be a valid follow-up to those evaluations. If the teacher is struggling or has having an issue with something, we need to mentor those teachers. Can't afford to lose teachers who want to do the job and just are failing a little bit because they are missing a skill set or two. We really have to give them the support we can find for them.
Just because you seemed a little rushed, did you want to add anything else to this? Or did you want to add anything more to this question? Or do you feel that you had an opportunity to answer?
Well, I mean, the question is sort of twofold, which is, you know, what? It asks, what do you know about versus what do you, what do you necessarily support?
Right.
So I think I covered what I know.
Okay. Okay, great. Sort of another tangent, not a tangent, but a different side of that, if you flip the coin, with regard to students. Do you feel, and this will start with Candy Joe, do you feel that there's too much red tape for a teacher in terms of things that they have now? They thought students were about to be put into their system. If your best effort appropriately, really connecting with the students. I mean, MPS is really, really big and it's supposed to be a student-centered educational approach, but you've got a wide spectrum of kids from, you know, those who are very bright, who may have, that may be a special need, to those then who have really specific special needs. So is there too much red tape is the question for teachers? But you might, it's kind of packaged into that, how do you evaluate teacher performance in a sense too? Because that's part of the red tape, if there isn't. I hope I bring that someone clear. Do teachers face as much red tape in doing what they should be doing best?
I think they do face a lot of red tape. Because we want them to be spending the most time with the children in the class teaching. They do spend a lot of time going over the test scores, evaluating what they know. If they do have a student in their class that needs an IMP, you know, discussing that with the special education teacher, making sure that they're forming that group of, you know, teacher, student, you know, social worker. There's a lot of red tape that goes on, I think, in that overall. I think a lot of the new programs that are coming into the system, like our reading program now, I think that's going to help in the teachers finding problems earlier, establishing what needs to be done, and then moving from that point.
Okay.
I'm assuming there is more red tape than we need, but obviously, the teacher has to spend a fair amount of time evaluating the students so they know where to focus their time in the classroom and who to help and who needs special attention. They need to communicate with the other teachers in the school and also work with the students, especially if you have somebody who is one end of the spectrum or another. We have to accommodate those students. I don't know how you get rid of that right now. That's probably something that's, as a businessman, is a little bit beyond my ken and I have to defer to some professionals to work those kind of things out.
Well, the rigors of No Child Left Behind and everything related to that, we may see some changes to that in the next couple of years, which I think would really be welcome to most of our teachers. We really put teachers in a terrible position when we are sort of, you know, cutting back on specials, you know, art and gym and things like that. We've cut back on recess. We don't give them any prep time. You know, I know that at Furrow, where my son attends, they have ten minutes of prep time at the end of the day. So if you have, you know, a child that needs your attention during that period of time, whatever it is, like that, you know, obviously, you're taking that work home with you that night. And so I, obviously, there's too much red tape in terms of teaching to the test, the time that is afforded to teaching itself, taking kids out of the classroom to go work on these computerized tests. But I didn't know just the overall effect it has on the teachers every single day in terms of squeezing their time to differentiate.
Okay, thanks. This is a question from the audience. I haven't verified its accuracy, but I would assume it's true. Many baby schools are poised to lose Sage. And in front of these, Garland, Clement, Trowbridge, Hubble Park, and Dover, as the examples. That's what I haven't verified. This has historically led to increased class, well, what they mean is this leads to increased class sizes by ten to fifteen students. What do you propose to compensate for the loss? We'll start with Candy and Joe.
Oh, all right. Actually, there's twenty-nine new schools that are on proposal for losing Sage in our district, I believe, are those that you mentioned. But as a whole, there's twenty-nine. And the problem itself is not the Sage problem. The money that has been lost is the class size reduction fee, which comes from MPS. That money is, as we are told, as a governance council, is no longer available to us. So either your budget needs to make up that money, or you will lose your program. So I don't foresee any school being able to come up with over $300,000 within that school budget to keep that program. It does increase class sizes as much as going from fifteen to thirty-four. But if the teachers are strong and are able to work their magic, then I think the school will have a chance of being able to handle that.
Your time's up. Sorry about that.
Ed? Obviously, class size is more important than overall school size. A big school can be successful. But class size gets to be really difficult. No matter how strong a teacher is, it's a burden when you start getting over twenty students in a classroom. I don't know where in the budget we can find money to prevent class expansions. But that would be something that we definitely have to be looking for, whether we can redirect other overhead to educational opportunities. That would certainly be something I'd strongly, I'll look into.
Okay.
That's one of the things that's really unfortunate about this process and its timing is that the principals put out their budgets within the last two weeks or so. The school governance councils worked on them. Then they go to the board. Meanwhile, somebody gets elected. Then that, those board members have to approve that budget. And then about a few weeks to maybe a couple of months after that, then the state budget gets approved. So truly, there are a lot of numbers that are in play and that are just completely in limbo than we, as parents, feel comfortable with our schools. And it'd be a lot nicer to know what we, what we had coming ahead for us for the next year. And I think it would be a matter of looking at those schools that are, you know, that are going to likely lose Sage at this point. And obviously, they had to have a conversation internally. It sounds like they did at Garland, where they determined that that was the best thing for the school rather than to lose our programs. And all we can really do is seek more revenue from Madison to cover those shortfalls.
Okay, thanks. Since we're talking about money limit, I just want to ask you each, this question we'll start with. Ed, have you read the most recent school board budget? And if you can talk about your experience with and or approach to budgeting and sort of implication being what fat money you've cut?
Okay, I'm going to make this real short, and I have not read it.
Okay. Megan? It's a beast. I haven't read it.
Yeah, no, I haven't, but I think that I've spent a lot of time working on programs with schools that I do, that we can dream long. And another thing is, you know, right now, a lot of federal departments pay their employees that are able to come up with cost-cutting measures within their own departments. And that's an innovation we really adopted from MPS. You know, that if, you know, the Sage article today in the Journal talked about bird school and its ability to hold on to the Sage program by increasing enrollment. And that's a really, you know, amazing and notable effort. And each school should really, you know, have the opportunity to sit down with their board member and discuss opportunities to innovate and to keep their programs alive.
I haven't read the budget, but I do sit down in the governance council at my school and I have seen the budget both last year and this year that has come through. Very difficult thoughts have been made. At our school, we learn to lose one third staff. We stand to lose temporarily anyways, our gym teacher, our rugby coach part-time, and our, gosh, man, I just want to blame. New teacher. But I think it would be helpful also if the number that are given that determines their budget, like their student numbers, could be a little bit more accurate so that when we are figuring out this, we don't have to dismiss teachers now to buy them back after Thursday Friday.
Okay, thanks. I have a question that was sent to me about, and so Megan first. Preface with some information, so I'll just go ahead and read it. So MPS has been appealing a lawsuit that was opened in 2001 about properly identifying the students with disabilities in the time they matter. This is GES versus DPI and MPS. The Department of Public Instruction, I understand, settled. MPS is in the process of appealing this, currently in appeal right now. And the question is, as a board member, what will you do to make sure the children with disabilities are receiving services and support afforded to them under the law?
That's a very good question, considering that, what is it? Close to thirty percent of our students have IEPs or receive some degree of special education. And, you know, the, one of the things that we see coming with some of these changes in Madison, and then you say, you know, well, what is, you know, this new open enrollment law or what possibly increasing the ability of students to go in voucher programs? Does that have to do with special education? Well, it's basically that, you know, the more students that are leaving MPS for these reasons, and the more that left behind, particularly the private and peripheral schools, aren't equipped to take on special education students. So we're left with the threat that we need. And, you know, and we now, we are tremendous to meet those needs. So that is, you know.
Let me just give you a little more time to, yeah, let me give you a little more time to please that, because that's sort of the preface, you're setting the stage.
Yes, yes.
Other than that, they still have to do that now, but.
This keeps happening in the media.
But I want people to hear if you have a possible solution to this daunting problem.
It is, and I mean, it's one of the things that I think that is what makes, I'm sure all of us get told all the time, what a thankless job we're looking into in terms of the deep vexing problems that face MPS and the responsibility that it is to represent so many people and kids in this setting. And I think that it's, you know, it's one of those things where you have to gather the community of experts on this and say, you know, we've got this population and what's the best way to work?
Candy Joe?
I think that it's very important for us to find the problems in the children right away. Earlier the better. Then to work as a group. You need the parent, the teacher, the special ed teacher, and the social worker to come together and as a group, figure out what you need to do best for that child.
Okay, thanks Megan.
I think Megan's on the right track. We need to do something to make sure that we take care of those children. It's indicative that voucher schools and other than the open enrollment have taken a lot of our other students away and we're left with those students. And that's not a bad thing. We do have a lot of quality programs to take care of those students. We're going to have to find funding to make sure we continue to provide the correct education for them. for them. I think if we improve our school system as a whole, we'll draw back some of the other school, other students, and it'll help us with the funds. I think we have to make sure that the formulas that are used for voucher schools are adjusted so that they stop penalizing MPS, so that we don't lose money that we shouldn't be losing. But it's critical that we provide a grounded education for all the students that are in our school system.
Since you brought up the funding clause, I just wanted to briefly on that with all of you, my understanding is that it's sort of out of the hands of board in terms of, I mean, it's a legislative issue that would have to happen. Is there any, does anyone have to take a look at your ideas about how to close that gap?
I think we have to make our voice heard louder in Madison. I don't think we've done that, even if I, even if I away from the board or from the MPS, just, I think, a great failing. Madison tends to marginalize us and make us a little island here. We have to get out and tell them all we need to do.
Either Leslie, you want to add anything about her, this is the same property question.
I just think that that's important, so we need to have our voices heard.
There are a lot of, there are some folks with some really good ideas, and whether it's Tony others in his proposal or, you know, the schools, there are a number of different proposals that would, that would help to fix the funding formula. And it's just, it is a matter of the political will. And, you know, we're gonna go, you know, to go to Madison and the state budget with a lot of issues in terms of the problems that are in Milwaukee and trying to, you know, keep basically the safety of our families and education. You know, we're just going to have to be really organized and get our point of view across.
Okay. Thanks for that. This one, we'll start with Candy, this is another question from the audience, and I haven't verified its accuracy, but it says, "We Act just announced a day back breaking out MPS in the smaller districts. The MTEA, the Milwaukee Teachers and Education Association, I believe, says this won't help and advocates smaller class sizes. Your thoughts?" So, it's time for Candy.
My thoughts? I guess I would have to get more information on how they plan on dividing the district? Are they fucking taking the districts now and making them smaller? Are they gonna each, will each district have their own ward? I mean, there's so many questions that I have in regards to that. What was the second part I'm sorry?
That the MTEA disagrees, basically. And says it won't help and advocates instead smaller sizes.
Smaller class sizes are a big thing. I mean, it's proven that the smaller the class size, the more hands-on that you can be with your children, the better the education that they're gonna get. It goes right back to even high schools, Ronald Reagan and Bayview, and, you know, the amount of students there, the amount of students at Bayview, the amount of students that, you know, at Ronald Reagan, their SAT schools are hitting that 21 point, whereas Bayview, they're only hitting the 14. So I mean, that's, that all has to do with sizes.
Thanks.
I saw the headline this afternoon, I was ready, particularly when I saw the source of the idea, where I normally would expect to see it. Obviously, I'd wanna see the details they have for the whole plan before I make a real decision, but my gut feeling is it's a distraction. If we were to do that, it's gonna take two, three, five years to implement. It's money we don't have to spend. As Candy Jo mentioned, does that mean now we have four or five central offices and four or five superintendents? That's again, money that could be directed to fix the current MPS system. So my gut says no, but until I actually read the whole proposal, I can't say it's a good or bad idea at this point.
I mean, I understand that MPS has flaws, and I understand that we have some hard work to do, but there are a lot of, there are a lot of districts with 70, 80,000 students in them in this country. And so we need to look at models of districts of those sizes that are functioning well. We need to take their best practices. We, you know, we need to work on those. We don't need to create forward bureaucracies and, you know, it doesn't, there's no efficiency as a scale, and it doesn't make any sense.
Okay. And the clear answers. This one starts with Ed. I want to ask, was it, do you believe or do you feel that the traditional education model, that's originally, you know, based on that agricultural calendar, does it still hold in the urban 21st century, where we're doing not only year-round versus school year, but when we've got smartphones, iPads, and, you know, things where literally actually means something differently too, because technological literacy is such an important part of people's careers or their life? So is there, is it time for radical restructuring of how we educate young people along lines I suggested in terms of technology and that sort of thing?
I'm a technologist. I'm a computer programmer. In most businesses now, computers are endemic, so yes, technology needs to be more of a focus, but along with basic math and science. I mean, those things still have to be understood in order for technology. It's not learning how to use a Wii or an Xbox and all of a sudden I'm a technology expert and I'm gonna have a career. All some guys can do that. I grew up in an agrarian community where we took a week off and filled silo in the farm. But yes, that's not the major focus anymore. If changing the school year, to accommodate students, accommodate lifestyles is important, spending the school year shorter than the day, making the day longer, there's no reason why it shouldn't be looked at and considered. If we see other school systems being successful with those kind of programs, if it's something that's adaptable to MPS, there's certainly, it should be on the table and discussed, and we shouldn't dismiss anything out of hand just because it's unusual or doesn't sound right to us.
Okay. Thanks.
One of the things that I love about living in a city is diversity, and I think that a variety of options to meet kids, you know, where they are, and sort of dealing with their multiple intelligences, and presenting them with different educational opportunities is a really great thing. So I definitely think that there is a place for year-round schools, that there is a place for schools that work on alternative calendar or that meet in unusual locations. I was in high school, I was in a school, then a school, a small school community within my high school. I had a cousin that in New York City attended City As, which was a city as school, where they did internships. And of course, we have the New School for Community Service, where they have a program like that, they have a program like that at Pulaski High School. So I, I mean, I just think that, you know, that in a big district, we have an opportunity to do a lot of different things and meet kids where they are, which is really exciting.
Okay. Thanks, Candy Jo.
I think that we do need to differ how we are educating the children. We have to offer them definitely more technology, science, you know, electronics. The STEM program that G is trying to establish in the schools, I think that that would really take MPS to the next level. I think, like Ed was saying, the basics still have the comfort, the reading, the math, the science, I mean, they still need to be there.
If I can just ask a quick follow-up, over about the curriculum that you're talking about, math, science, not abandoning that, but the way it's delivered. You feel that the classroom with 20 kids or one teacher or anybody else, you have to have quick responses around?
No, your work economics, I'm with smart boards, you know, the computer labs, all those types of things. I think you have to, you have to change that in order to keep the kids educated with the way that time is changing.
Okay.
There was an article recently, you talked about doing away with traditional desks in the classroom, and a couple of years ago, there was other articles about allowing some students to stand up because they couldn't sit still, literally. I'm not sure that's something you do statewide. I think it's something that you maybe do in certain classrooms, teachers are comfortable with that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't overlook experimenting with other ways of teaching kids in schools, but I wouldn't at this point say that you need to make radical swing and reform things.
Thank you.
Well, we already do it pretty well in Montessori schools, so I really think that there's a lot of, there's a lot of room to teach differently, and those are some of our highest performing schools.
Question here is, are you a supporter of specialist schools, I presume specialty schools and arts and humanities as an example? And this one starts with Megan, and for time maybe I'll fold in actually since you just brought up Montessori.
There you go.
Just for you, do you support Montessori as an option? Because there is, obviously Fernwood is in Bayview, and then downtown Montessori, my understanding is not part of the district, but it's in Bayview area, and so I think that's something I'd like to comment on.
Um, yes. I, no, I mean, I won't overstate the fact that I'm really keen on diversity.
Specialty schools and support Montessori.
Diversity education options in the diverse school district, yes.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, Candy Jo.
I am all for it also.
Yeah, I agree. I think we're all even on this. Parents should have options to select an educational program that best suits their interests and their needs, and I think across the city we need to have as we can.
I'd just like to throw out there and invite you to discuss your perspective on the Milwaukee Primary Choice Program. We'll start with Candy Jo on this one.
The Choice Program?
Correct. Vision, Megan.
We with the voucher system. I think that a lot of the children who use the voucher system, once they get into those schools outlaying, and, you know, it might be a problem child that has moved from school to school to school, and now their parents decide Franklin, let's say. Once they get to that school and Franklin decides that they're too much of a handful, they send them back to Milwaukee, but at that point, we've already lost our money. So I don't like that whole idea that you can voucher us out, and then when they can't handle it, they flow back into the system.
Okay. Thanks.
Voucher schools are here, and I'm a barn. That's a fight that we don't have time to make right now. I am 100% opposed to expanding the voucher program. I don't think we need to lift the cap on that, which is something that's been discussed in Madison. I think it is detrimental to MPS. When we were interviewed by one of the websites, they asked us, should we be spending time trying to get the kids back in the voucher schools? And again, I think that's, that would be a way to promote the voucher schools back in. If we succeed, which we have to do in improving our schools, we will become the competition that everybody who's taught and taught in those voucher students want to come back to MPS, and that's where we have to put our focus right now.
Okay. Thanks.
Absolutely agree with that. I really, you know, my, my vision is that parents walk in, come to enrollment in January or August or whenever they're doing it, and they are so enthusiastic about their choices within MPS that that's why they're showing up at least, not to ask for a voucher.
Okay. Question from the audience, there's been lots of discussion about specialized programs. What about just a basic education program that provides a solid foundation for all children? And this goes to Ed first.
We're talking that as opposed to have specialty programs. Obviously, I don't think that we'll ever have a situation where every MPS school is purely a specialty program. There's certainly going to be a place to provide a solid core education for most of our students that want just, just that. My major focus, obviously, is math, science, and language skills. And I say language skills, I'm not just talking about being able to read and write effectively, I'm talking about a second language would be really apropos. You've got a world economy that our students are gonna be going into when they graduate from high school, that the second language isn't normal. I'd like to see us keep the programs for arts, music, and gym. We have issues with obesity in this country, gym is really an important issue. Arts and music provide well-rounded individuals, and they also have been proven to help students with their math and science skills. So I think we need to do those things. And there's no reason why we shouldn't have some school that tracks a basic education. That will be something that some parents are going to want.
Okay. Thanks.
Absolutely. There are a number of, you know, just amazing schools in MPS that are, you know, what you think of when you imagine a school, when you see it on TV or see it in a movie, and there, there's absolutely a place for those in MPS, just like there is for students that learn in different ways or that need a specialized environment. And I don't, I don't necessarily think that those are a scarcity in the district. It's just that you hear a lot about the humanities programs or the Montessori or things like that, but if you walk into the average school building, you do see a very traditional classroom.
Okay. Thanks.
I think the traditional programs are all of our schools, but when you start dealing with the students themselves, you find that they have certain needs or excel or whatever, and the teachers have to steer them either way. If they're excelling, they need to be able to challenge that student, and if they're lacking in something, they need to be able to give them the attention that they need. So I guess the basic programs are there, but the other programs just help support the teachers with, with what's going on in their classrooms.
Okay. Thanks. Next question would be the next to last question, this starts with Megan. Is there a disciplinary problem in MPS, and if, how would you just discipline across the district?
The tough ones. I can listen around those for you guys though. In terms of suspensions, especially when you're talking about middle and high school students, I know that there is, you know, there's pressure within the district to bring those rates down, but while also not affecting the base attendance rate, because you will have students that are told, we're not gonna suspend you, but don't come to school tomorrow. And so you can see a school where if all of a sudden the suspension rate goes down, the attendance rate also goes down, that's equally a signal that there is a problem, you know, enforcing the discipline. There's a program called PBIS, Positive Behavior, it would get me the IAS somebody initiatives.
Intermittent.
Intermittent, there we go, and sports, that is, that started two years ago in some schools, it went last year and was this year, it's more or less just a run, that is making some gains, restoring justice, makes some things. There are a lot of good programs out there that I think that schools are experimenting with that is helping to keep behavior on track at most.
Thank you.
There is discipline problems in the district, of course, in dealing with, you know, hundreds of children. But I think each school kind of attacks it on what the discipline problems are. Elementary schools, it always seems to fall where there is the least supervision to get the bus. You know, in middle schools, it seems to be, you know, time that they seem to be in a larger group. And, you know, high schools, it can be right in the classroom. I mean, it, the programs that are out there, the teachers need to stick with one and commit themselves to staying on track, no vital threats, no nothing, you need to follow through with what you're doing.
Okay. Thanks.
Unfortunately...